Good morning, welcome to Thursday, March 25th Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today, I am hopeful this will be our last virtual meeting. We plan to be in person next board meeting, which will be at the end of April. But today we are meeting pursuant to MCL 15.263A, which allows our Board of Commissioners to meet virtually. If you do have public comment, please feel free to submit it to publiccomment@kentcountymi.gov. And with that, I will officially call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Good morning. As a reminder, please state when you announce your presence, please state your location. Commissioners, scads.
East Grand Rapids, Kent County, Michigan, here.
Wooden.
Here, calling in from Grand Rapids, Michigan and Kent County.
Womack.
Here.
And your location, Commissioner?
Grand Rapids, Michigan, Kent County.
Thank you. Commissioners Polkowski.
Present on on a Shenabib land known as Grand Rapids, Michigan, Kent County.
Brand.
Here, I am in Grand Rapids, Kent County, Michigan.
Hennessy.
Here in Grand Rapids, Kent County.
The Cloud.
Here, Kentwood, Michigan.
Parks.
Present, Kent County, Kentwood, Michigan.
Teal.
Here, Grand Rapids Township, Kent County, Michigan.
Bevy.
I'm here, Gaines Township, Kent County, Michigan.
Coleman. Commissioner Coleman. Know that he will be joining us. I'm running behind. Commissioners Burrow.
I am present, located in the city of Granville.
Ponstein.
Here, located in the city of Granville.
Vice Chair Stack.
I am here, calling in from the beautiful city of Indianapolis, where basketball is key.
Commissioners Jones.
Here, Cannon Township, Kent County, Michigan.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioners Antor.
Here, Kent County, Michigan, Sparta Township, and I will be leaving this meeting at approximately 9:40. Just wanted to give you a heads up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Green.
Here, Plainfield Charter Township, Kent County, Michigan.
Bolter.
I am here, Madam Clerk, from the beautiful township of Cascade in Kent County, Michigan.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have seventeen members present, two absent, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to item three, and I will call on Commissioner Teal for our invocation today.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. We have a long agenda, so I'm going to keep it pretty short and sweet. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion and nurture the bonds of this community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that affect the residents of Kent County, and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of the community. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. We are on to item four, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We are on to Special Order of Business today, and I welcome Jerry Miller and Jesse Schulte from the Kent Conservation District to give our annual ten-minute update. Welcome.
Morning and welcome, county commissioners and administrators. Thank you for providing Kent Conservation District an opportunity to provide our annual update. I'm I'm Jerry Miller, Board Director and Chair. I'm one of the publicly elected board members who serve four-year terms. My board colleagues are listed on the left side of the slide. There we go, next slide. And in addition to the elected board members, we can appoint associate members to our board. Our current board consists of two farmers, as well as individuals who bring a broad array of expertise and life experiences to the district. Since March 2020, the board has met virtually each month and complied with open meeting laws to include the opportunity for public comments during each meeting. Our mission is to protect and enhance the natural resources of Kent County with focus on soil, water, and plant resources on working lands. We implement our mission by partnering with USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service, that's NRCS, to implement federal farm bill programs. In addition, we partner with Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development, that's EMDAR, to implement grant-funded conservation programs. And we work with Michigan DNR and Eagle, as well as other organizations, to implement multiple grant-funded programs. At this time, I'm pleased to introduce Jesse Schulte, Kent Conservation District Manager. Jesse provides leadership to the day-to-day operations of the district. She writes grants, issues grant reports, oversees financial obligations, and supervises all of our staff. Jesse?
Thanks so much for having us today. We just wanted to highlight some of our accomplishments. The Kent Conservation District is guided by our five-year Public Resource Assessment and our business plan, which is updated quarterly. We're pleased to host a number of different educational events throughout the year, including our invasive species control and education program, where we're educating townships and Kent County Park staff on how and why invasive species control is important and how to prevent the next outbreak. We treated over three hundred unique individual invasive species sites last year alone. Our staff assist the Natural Resource Conservation Service in delivering farm bill programs to Kent County and perform resource management activities that serve the public interest, including the design and install of cover crops, grass waterways, tillage management, pollinator habitats, and chemical storage. Our soil conservationist with it, who has been with us for eleven years, assisted over twenty thousand acres of land. We hired a local agricultural producer to do outreach to farmers, to promote cover crops. We have a technician that implements the Michigan Agricultural Environmental Assurance Program, which is a confidential program to help farmers reduce their environmental risks. And you remember from our past visits, we're still promoting the Five-Year Regional Conservation Partnership Program, which is bringing $2.8 million to Kent County agricultural producers and forest landowners to address the sedimentation in E. coli, which is in the Rogue River and the Indian Mill Creek watersheds. We're going to install conservation practices this spring, like our streambank protection and restoration. And we're really proud to share that we were able to secure three outreach grants to help us promote that $2.8 million, including a Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy 319 Water Quality Grant, where we're able to provide additional cost share to producers who might not be able to afford these installation of our practices. We also have a district forester who can help landowners sign up for programs and learn how to better manage their forests. And we're proud to have two engineers through the Conservation Technical Assistance Initiative Grant. Our engineer was able to assist fourteen farms in Kent County with planning, design, and construction of engineered conservation practices, including grassed waterways. And we hope you can can join us with our Field Day this June, where we'll be highlighting one of the grass waterways that our engineers designed. Through the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, we were able to hire an additional engineer, and she was able to provide technical assistance, engineering design, and construction inspection on thirty-five practices on seventeen farms. So as you know, over the past century, the U.S. has lost a staggering one hundred and fifty million acres of habitat in farmland. We're pleased to be able to protect the farmland that's left, and also to encourage landowners to install Michigan native trees and plants. We sold over forty-two hundred individual plants last year, and this is our largest fundraiser. So now I'd like to turn it back over to our Chair, Jerry Miller, to talk about our annual operating budget.
Thank you, Jesse. As stated earlier, we work hand-in-hand with USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service to implement farm bill programs. However, we receive no direct funding or administrative fees from the farm bill programs. All farm bill funding goes directly to farmers and producers to implement conservation practices on their land. Therefore, our operational funds are limited to small administrative fees in the range of eleven to fifteen percent from contracts and grants, income from plant sales that Jesse just mentioned, and donations from our current sponsors, who are listed in the lower right on this slide. I will take a minute to review the pie chart, which shows our source of revenue during the past year. Starting in the red area, about ten percent of our administrative revenue is derived from grants, including the EPA watershed work in the Rogue River and Indian Mill Creek, the NACD Technical Assistance Funds, which we use to employ the farmer that Jesse mentioned, the any, a part, who is a part-time staff member and who lives in the watershed and provides outreach to his neighbors. In addition, the Environmental Education Grant, which focuses on youth programs. The area in orange consists of a grant from Michigan's DNR Invasive Species Control Program and fees for service to control invasive species, as well as a grant from the Wiggy Foundation. The next two areas shown in gray and yellow are our grants from EMDAR. These grants provide funds to employ the three staff members, the soil conservationist, one of the two conservation engineers, and our meat technician. Fortunately, the EMDAR grants do not require a match fund. However, they do require us to conduct a biannual audit. Next shown in blue is the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Grant that allows us to employ a conservation engineer. Last year, the foundation asked us to apply for an additional engineer position. Unfortunately, we were unable to provide the approximately $48,000 of match funds required, and therefore, we could not apply. The green area is our primary source of operational funds. Last year, we conducted three plant sales using COVID protocols. These sales netted approximately $21,000 in operational funds. To summarize, the district finances finances are primarily dependent on contracts and grants. We have an outstanding staff well-positioned to share their expertise for implementing conservation practices on working lands across Kent County. Our only limitation is the lack of operational funds to provide match for nearly all of our grant opportunities. This concludes our presentation. We welcome your questions and comments.
Thank you both today. What what amazing work you're doing. Do we have any questions or comments today from any board members? Looking for the raise your hand, Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Jerry, thanks for being here today. I know Commissioner Hennessy and I attended your annual meeting, and a lot of great information out. I think one thing people don't realize is all the work that you folks do, and then you get no direct funding from the county. In 2009, the state of Michigan eliminated your funding. How hard is it to constantly be out trying to raise money and support your organization? And then kind of parlay that in of all the things that you do that affect people's everyday lives? Like like invasive species, people always think, you know, it's out in the woods or it's in the waters. But a lot of times those invasive species, and some which can be dangerous, can be right in the backyard in Walker. Well, thank you for your question, Commissioner. And I answered the first part, and I asked Jesse to respond on the invasive species part because she's the plant expert and 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 leads that effort. But Jesse and and some of our board members, we spend a lot of time just pursuing grants. And as indicated in our comments, the issue is, other than the EMDAR grants, they all require some type of match, normally about twenty-five percent. So again, the the example I gave of the Fish and Wildlife Grant, for a couple of years, two, it was about $200,000 grant. And to come up with the roughly fifty, just under $50,000 in match was, we just didn't have the resources to do that either in kind, because we can use match in kind. And Jesse, because she's not on grants primarily, she's on the revenue we develop from fees and administrative fees and sales. So she's really the only in-kind time that we can use on grants. And and several of these grants, the EPA 319, the National Fish and Wildlife Grant, and other grants, the NACD grant are federal pass-through funds. So we cannot use other federal grants to match federal pass-through funds with. So I, that's sort of, so we spent an inordinate amount of time working on grants, Commissioner. And Jesse, you want to respond to the comment on invasive species?
Sure. Yeah, I think it's important to remember that these invasive species can impact property values. So Japanese knotweed can crack foundations, the bittersweet is taking down our trees. So getting in there early and doing prevention can really save our communities a lot of money and time and make sure that our communities stay vibrant and we're protecting the environmental health. So the same with the farmers, we're trying to help them save their soil, so that saves them money. It also helps protect the Grand River, and the same with invasive control. It's doing that early detection and rapid response, so that we don't have that next Emerald Ashbore taking out all of our ash trees.
Any other questions from any of our commissioners today? Commissioner Antor, I think your hand's still up. Do we have another follow-up?
Yeah, if I could, I would just go. Mention, I believe we still have a million dollars committed to the the Whitewater. I guess I'll call it a fantasy at this point. I don't know if that's moving forward. And I was never a supporter of that project. I think money could be much better spent helping out with something like this. And I was just wondering if that's a possibility, if this whitewater ends up collapsing under its own weight. If we could take that money that's already allocated towards that and just shift some of it, maybe not all of it, but shift some of it over to support this initiative. That's my comment.
Right. Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. Commissioner Ponstein and I did attend the annual meeting, and we're and we're really impressed with the breadth of the work that's being done to help in our agricultural lands, but to help in neighborhoods too. Jesse didn't talk about it specifically, but there was a point at which they they went into a neighborhood in Walker and worked on invasive species. And and they also, at the annual meeting, spoke of how they work with some of the Kent County departments. And so their work, you know, really does tie into offices like our Drain Commissioner office as well. And and it's a very cooperative, collaborative type of enterprise that they're operating there on a shoestring. And it's it's quite amazing, and I do think it's worthy of our consideration for future support in terms of what it does for our agricultural land, but our our, the the resource that we have in land and water in general. And I have observed some of the educational programs that they've done down by the Indian Mill Creek. They, you know, they just really do quite a bit. And the native plant sale is, I think, still open for orders. Thank you.
Still open. Thank you, Commissioner Hennessy. Yes, the plant sale is still open for orders till, I think, April 2nd. You can go to kentconservation.org, and the order form is up online. And Jesse is, that's one of the things she spends a lot of her time is processing those orders. And thanks for your comment also, Commissioner Hennessy. We work very closely with the Drain Commissioner, with Mr. Yonker and his staff, especially with our work in the Rogue River and Indian Mill Creek, that joint projects with the Drain Commissioner. And also, we have a working relationship with the Kent Road Commission, working with them on addressing invasive species and right-ofways as well.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Jerry, and and Jesse, again, appreciate all all of your work. And and we've got quite a bit of bittersweet in my backyard, all around my house, so I can totally appreciate how invasive it is. It's it's quite a quite a annual spring workout, so pulling those things. So thank you so much, and we appreciated your presentation today.
Thank you for your time, Chair Bolter, and all of you commissioners and administrators. We appreciate you for this opportunity.
Thank you. All right, we are now on to item six of our agenda, public comment related to agenda items only. I did see someone in chat did alert me that they wanted to speak to an agenda item. Ms. Betsy Lopez, are you there with us today? You have three minutes, and please state your name and address.
Good morning. Thank you so much. Yes, my name is Betsy Lopez Wagner. I reside in Lowell, so Virgin's Township. I am a constituent of Kent County, and I did want to speak on item 8B, which is the Establishment of the Chief Inclusion Officer role. First, I think it's really important that we think about what is inclusion, especially within our county, when racism runs rampant. The reason I bring this up is because I do feel, as you know, someone who has lived in the county for almost a year now, that there is more time, dollars, and energy spent looking at invasive species, such as Emerald Ashbore, Asian Carp, and looking at those invasive species in the right-ofways, right? Like, I love the environment. I myself also very much in-depth care about our agriculture and our climate future. We cannot think that racism is any different. Environmental racism is real. Racism needs to be something that this county declares a public health crisis. And so I'm hopeful that, under the duties of this Chief Inclusion Officer, we will be seeing something that moves beyond the performative actions. People are dying in Kent County because of racism, and there are community efforts right now that are working, you know, really to look and see, how can we pass a resolution or a declaration that explicitly states this? And also that backs, you know, the work that Governor Whitmer has called upon us all to do since her August 2020 declaration. So I think what we're looking at right now is recognizing the need for public support and allyship for the Black, Indigenous, Latinx, and Asian communities, who, like me, call Kent County home. I really want to flag that, you know, Commissioner earlier, Commissioner Stan spoke about, you know, what affects everyday lives, the invasive species in our backyards. And I will say, as a woman of color who's raising a child of color in this community, it scares me what's in our backyards. I cannot tell you the number of times that I think twice when walking into Meyer, when I look around and I have to be very mindful, very diligent, you know, at night. Who, where am I at? Who am I with? And this is a person who, you know, moves very, very freely, as I'm sure the women of this commission can understand. We have our power, we have our agency, we need to be able to be comfortable in our communities. And so that's why I'm saying that when you're looking at a position such as this, to really think about, where are you going to be sourcing from, and who is going to be doing the hiring of such a role? And do you all feel that you're equipped to be able to do this? Do you all understand how insidious racism is? And so again, asking that we really look at this, you know, with the strongest measures possible, that we look at this with the same attention that we spend, you know, on those invasive species, because racism is real and it is alive. And I can tell you, it is something that we need to work on here. We need to work on it throughout our state and throughout our nation and beyond. And so again, really looking for those solid policy changes, really looking that the budget accounts for the kind of work that is necessary here. And again, really looking that this commission ensure, you know, that all of us are represented and that all of our families are kept safe here, so that we can continue to call Kent County home, so that we can continue to pay, you know, our our taxes here and live here, and not feel that we need to escape in order to get to another community where, you know, racism still will exist, but perhaps we're not seen day-to-day in the ways that we are now.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Betsy, for for being here. We have quite a few other hands up. Do want to remind you, please keep your comment in this portion of our agenda to agenda items that are that are relevant to today's agenda. We do also have public comment at the end of the meeting for any any other issues. With that, I will call on Samika Douglas.
Thank you. Again, I am Samika Douglas, and I am from the third ward here in the city of Grand Rapids, Michigan. I'm also calling on, in regards to that item 8B, the Establishment of the Chief Inclusion Officer role. There are several things that I would like to know. What does that role consist of? And who is the individuals that is, will be vetting that 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 officer for that role, or that person for that role? The reason why I ask this is because we need to understand that racism in this county is a public health crisis and that our Black and Brown babies, our Asians, Latinx, everyone, people are dying here, not just in Kent County, but across America because of racism. And I understand that there is a community effort in place right now to get the county to pass a resolution or declaration that explicitly states this. So my question is, will that officer, that inclusion officer, will that role, will they be able to speak upon what's going on in in our county? Or will they be muzzled? Will they be forced to pretend pretend like racism is not an issue in Kent County? It's time for us to move past the symbolic gestures to real solutions with regards to economic equality in Kent County. In August 2020, Governor Whitmore declared racism as a public health crisis in Michigan. So we call on the commissioners to do the same thing, and then whoever you place in that position to and to work with us in the community and to understand that this is a public health crisis here in Grand Rapids as well. And I recognize the need for public support, allies of the Blacks, Indigenous, Latinx, Asians, and all the communities of color, who, like me, call Kent County home. We call on the commissioner to hold herself accountable and is constituent and stand in solidarity with us. I I am a mother of an African-American son, who I have to explain and have to have these hard conversations with when he's not in under my eyesight, to understand that when he is, even though he's fourteen, they don't look at him as a fourteen-year-old. They look at him as a Black man or their next suspect. I have to have these hard conversations with him. So I just want to know, who is this person that you all are looking to put into this role? How are you placing this person in this role? Will this person be muzzled for this role, or will they come out as well as Governor Whitmore and said that this is a public health crisis in Michigan, as well as in Grand Rapids? And that is my time. Now you're on my time, the rest of my time to the next person.
Thank you for joining us today. Next up, Lainell Legron. Lainell, are you here?
I am. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. I'd also like to comment on Agenda Item 8B, the Establishment of the Chief Inclusion Officer Role. Just to echo the sentiments of some of our colleagues, racism is a public health crisis in Kent County. We are hoping that the county will acknowledge this. And the person who is in this role needs to have the freedom to be honest about what's going on rather than being forced, like my colleagues, to make it said, to be muzzled or pretend like it doesn't exist. I resonate with that notion of symbolic gestures versus real. For far too long, we have, when people die because of discrimination, when there's real crises because of discrimination, we create these symbolic positions or these watered-down statements. And the people in those positions are there symbolically. They they are really, they're they're muzzled, they are, if they dare speak the truth about what's happening or try to actually save lives, they're fired, they're disciplined, they're reprimanded. And what we're asking for, what I'm asking for specifically as a resident of Kent County, I live in the city of Wyoming, is that we move past this symbolism when it comes to racism and come up with real, solid solutions. There is a community group that is meeting to work on a declaration or a resolution that that declares racism a public health crisis with real, solid policy changes and financial asks. It would be wonderful if this new person that you guys hire could partner with the group so that we can get some real changes and start to save some lives. We've moved past the time and history where we pretend like something doesn't exist. We try to overtalk people who bring it to the table and try to discredit them and demonize them instead of actually dealing with the real issue at hand. So I hope that when this issue is presented, you all will adopt it, and when you hire. And when you hire this person, they are not forced to pretend like racism is not an issue in Kent County. It's time for us to move past symbolic gestures and get some real solutions with regard to economic inequality in Kent County. No longer shall we use Black faces that don't have Black personalities and Black voices. We really need real people that understand the problem to participate and develop in this solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Lainell. Next up is Isaac DeGraff. Isaac, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address, and what agenda item you want to discuss today.
Great, can you hear me? Looks like it. Thanks for having me today. My name's Isaac DeGraff. I reside in Grand Rapids. I'm here representing Linkup, located in the Madison Square neighborhood. I want to echo the comments of my previous colleagues that took comment on Agenda Item 8B, Establishment of the Chief Inclusion Officer Role. We need to understand that racism in this country is a public health crisis. Kent County needs to follow the steps taken by Governor Whitmer and other county governments around the state and county to declare racism a public health crisis, develop policy solutions, and identify funding to address this crisis. Like others have stated, there's community effort in place right now to get the county to pass a resolution or declaration that explicitly states this. We ask for your partnership and work in moving this work forward. We ask that once this declaration is presented to the commission, that we hope you will adopt it. And we hope that this inclusion officer will not be muzzled or forced to pretend like racism is not an issue in Kent County, but work with us to address and lead to positive change. It's time for us to move past these symbolic gestures to real solutions with regard to racial inequality in Kent County. We look forward to working with you in the process. I appreciate you listening, and I will yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Isaac. Next up, Abigail Bartlett. Abigail, your name, address, and the agenda item you'd like to discuss.
Hi, my name is Abigail Bartlett. Can you hear me? I know we all asked that question. Hello, okay. Hi, my name is Abigail Bartlett. I am a resident of Kent County. I live in Alto, Michigan, and I work in Grand Rapids, Michigan, in the Third Ward. And again, I am echoing the sentiments of my former community members about 8B, Agenda Item 8B, and the importance of the Inclusion Officer. And I would echo all of the sentiments that they have said about the intentionality around hiring a Chief Inclusion Officer as someone with a background in social work, particularly in community work. I think it's also not enough to just hire somebody in terms of a Chief Inclusion Officer, one, being very intentional about where is the community they're coming from? Are they from the neighborhood, are they from representing that community? But I also am wondering, what is the work that is going on within the Commissioners' work, as well as the general Kent County employees and staff, to really implement a structure around anti-racism work within the community? Because while it's important to hire somebody as a Chief Inclusion Officer without the full support of a culture shift, I think that you're, we're not doing the work that really needs to be done. And as I echoed before about racism as a public health crisis, we can recognize the need for environmental work. Right, my work is in environmental advocacy, but you know, environment starts with, I think we don't treat people in Kent County, particularly minority communities, Black, Latinx, Indigenous communities with the same, one, resources and work, or support, sorry. And I really hope that, you know, while this Chief Inclusion Officer is really important, as somebody previously said, you know, we don't want them to be just a figurehead of this, but really as a cultural shift, as a county and as a state and as all of that. So, I hope that within that work, it's not just the decision to, one, hire somebody, but how do we really work on transforming our county and our work to combat the racism and all of the work? And I want to say, as somebody who lives in Alto and works in Grand Rapids, the disparity is very real, and we talk about resources and policing and all of this, and how when we invest and support people, that that really makes a difference. And so I hope that that is really considered as we go forward in this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Abigail. Next up is Ned Andre. Hope I'm pronouncing that right. Ned, welcome. Please give us your name, address, and you have three minutes to address any agenda item. Ned, are you there?
I am here. Sorry, I see now you sent me an unmute button, just unmuted. My name is Ned Andre. I reside at 1821 Newark Avenue in Grand Rapids, resident of the city, as well as a constituent of the county. And I'm, I would like to speak about Agenda Item 8B, the Chief Inclusion Officer. I've come to understand that-
We're having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, let me turn my, can you, you can't hear me at all?
We can hear you.
Yeah, it's good.
Okay. About the Chief Inclusion Officer, one of the things-
Can you hear me?
Is it, I think Kent County has to take very seriously that white supremacy operates in a way that they recover from a win very quickly. So, there's a national movement right now to address race as a public health crisis. And what Kent County will often do is will then say, well, let's put a figurehead up, and we'll quell the people's unrest by putting a figurehead up, a Black or Brown person who can give the appearance that we're addressing these, this issue. And then, you know, with managerial racism and proxy racism and systems that are in place that I don't fault the Commissioners, it's, the Commissioners are just doing what the Commissioners do. But the entire system is set up in such a way that we never see real change. Well, now we have the Governor, Governor Whitmer declaring racism as a public health crisis. She's issued a directive to the state departments, of which Kent County Health Department is one, supervised by Kent County Commission. And I echo the sentiment of the others that we must declare racism a public health crisis in Kent County. It has seriously limited the lives of the constituents that you serve, health-wise, dying at an earlier rate, living under tremendous stress and pressure, and all kinds of chronic conditions that arise out of the aftermath, the aftereffects of racism. And it's been, there's a crushing and oppressive weight in this region right now. If you look at professors at Calvin College suing, teachers in Kentwood Public Schools suing, doctors at Spectrum Health raising the alarm that racism is crushing their lives, their spirit, their mind, their psyche. And if the county doesn't get on board and follow the Governor's directive, then they're not doing their job by the people who have elected them. So, I would like to demand that the Kent County Commission declare racism a public health crisis in line with the Governor.
Thank you, Ned. Can everyone hear me okay? I had to get off and get on, and I- Okay. Pitched, had internet issues all day. Any other public comment today? It looks like Commissioner Antor. Oh. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Commissioner Antor? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Antor, well, we can't have, apparently you cannot speak in public.
Miscellaneous, miscellaneous, and-
I'm not going to be here. I'd like to speak in public comment. I am part of the public.
Okay, go for it.
Thank you. Yes, I will not be. I have a doctor's appointment, so I can't participate miscellaneous. And since I am part of the public, I'd like to address some of the concerns that were brought up. First of all, I keep hearing the term rampant racism here in Kent County. Now, you can say that as much as you want, but unless you can show some examples, it's nothing but hyperbole. You know, to throw those types of terms out are so insunderer, I can't believe we're doing this without any examples. Does racism exist in Kent County? I assume it does. Have I seen any glaring examples of it? No, not at all. And good luck to anybody that is blatantly racist. It just, you know, that's a short shelf life for anybody. And then I'm hearing this glowing praise of Governor Whitmer for her humanitarian work in public health, and she calls this a public health crisis. This is the same woman that has been stuffing COVID patients in nursing homes. And when she was told, you can't do that, you're killing patients, and they actually wrote a bill that would keep her from putting sick COVID patients into nursing homes, which is probably the most idiotic thing I've ever heard of since COVID broke out, she vetoed the bill. So, this is our health advocate? This is the person who's been deemed as one of the smartest people in Michigan? I don't think so. She should be prosecuted. And she should be probably at least-
Commissioner Antor, this public comment is for agenda items.
Okay, well, I'm getting to that. We keep, if we're praising Governor Whitmer in these public comments, I want to say, I'm not sure which Governor Whitmer they're praising. It doesn't make any sense to me that, all of this is nonsensical. You know, we've had to this, this racism that is rampant. One of the reasons why people think it's rampant is because after the Atlanta shootings, our own department, Kent County Health Department, or not Kent County Health, but Kent County, came up with a declaration, they plastered all over our website, saying that, talking about racism and how bad we feel about the Asian victims in Atlanta. Well, yeah, you know, saying we're against racism is like saying the sky is blue, okay? Of course, we're against racism, but let's not manufacture racism. The police in Atlanta and the FBI Director came out and said that was not racist.
Point of order, point of order.
I got my three minutes, correct? I'd like to finish.
Okay, please, you're, you've got a couple of seconds, and I'm only allowing this because you're leaving early.
If the FBI Director says it's not a racist situation down there, which it wasn't clearly, so why are we posting stuff on our website saying that was-
Thanks, Commissioner Antor. And I, again, for board members, I allowed that because Commissioner Antor is leaving early and won't be able to make public comment. But I would like to go back to the public. We have a couple other public, members of the public here with their hands raised. I, again, will remind members of the public, please to keep these comments to agenda items. And I will call on Lilly Shulting.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, I am Lilly Chain Shulting. I live at 3703 Burton Street, Grand Rapids, or Kentwood, and we're just in Kent County. And I am giving my comment regarding Item 8B, the Inclusion Officer, and I wondered if we already have an overall mission for which the Inclusion Officer will be addressing, a mission relating to racism and the impact of racism as a public health crisis. And if we don't have that specifically, then I invite you to a serious discussion of racism and the impact of racism as a crisis. And this is really a nonpartisan issue. We all care about equality, equity, and justice. And it is in line and following Governor Whitmer's statewide directive. So, this should be a non-issue. I would expect 100% or maybe close to 100% of you to understand that this is good for you, it's good for all of us. So, join us. Let's have a community engagement. Let's do the research together, and let's identify the action items which we need to ensure equality and equity and justice that our community needs, and which is helpful for you. And let's also consider what Kent County has done in the last 10 years and will continue to do in the next 10 years around the issues of racism and the impact of racism in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lilly. Next up is Sergio Sierra Reyes. Sergio, are you there? Please give us your name, address, and the agenda item you would like to comment on.
My name is Sergio Sierra Reyes. I live in Kentwood, Michigan, Kent County. I'm calling to, regarding Agenda Item 8B, regarding the Chief Inclusion Officer, calling to, to remind you that we need to understand that racism is, in the county, is a public health crisis. People are dying in Kent County because of racism. I understand that there is a community effort in place right now to get the county to pass a resolution or declaration that explicitly states this. The declaration the community is working on includes solid policy changes and financial asks from the county. I hope that you would adopt this when it is presented to you in person. The person you hire is going to be in an important position, and hopefully this person isn't muzzled, and that the changes that are needed to be made are supported by all the Commissioners. Right now, the plan is to finalize the resolution after we host community engagement sessions in April, and then work to get the resolution on the agenda for the commission on the meeting of the May 13th. I'd like to thank Commissioner Antor for reminding me to praise the Governor for her efforts. And also, an example of racism is a Commissioner taking the opportunity to make public comment to deny racism and claim that it's just allegations in the county. That is all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Paul Mayhew. Paul, please give us your name, address, and agenda item you'd like to discuss. Paul, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. My name is W. Paul Mayhew, former Kent County Commissioner. And I was interested in the topic of racism and in Kent County. And one of the things I just want to say, I just got out of hospital about a month and a half ago, dealing with COVID. I came out of the hospital, I was so blessed that God healed me. I even had a stroke. And the issue is, I called Channel 8. Now, this is racist. I called Channel 8 to ask to interview me about my experience with COVID and coming out of the hospital. The news director said, we, we know you, Paul Mayhew, and you've did enough for your community, so you don't need to do no more. And then they hung up the phone. So, that's racist. How do you know that I did enough for the community? And God gave me the strength to come out of COVID. And I should let people know about it because I'm an interest leader. So, anyway. And also, in closing, I would, oh, I thought that we already had a person that would deal with racism in the county. This person that you're talking about hiring, we already had that. Inclusion person. The inclusion person has, we've worked with, I worked with the inclusion group all the time that I was commissioned. I don't know what happened to it. So, anyway, let me close, because I don't want to go over. But thank you for allowing me to speak this morning, and I really appreciate it, Miss Mandy Bowden. Thank you.
Thank you, former Commissioner Mayhew. All right, I don't see any other hands raised, so we are going to move on to consent agenda. And I will call on Commissioner Teal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolter. I move the consent agenda for March 25th, 2021.
Support Commissioner Jones. Moved by Commissioner Teal, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on the consent agenda? Any Commissioner hands? All right, I see none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, missionaries, SCAGs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes, from Byron Township.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 18 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes, the consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are now on to resolutions. I'll remind our board members, we do have a very robust agenda today. So keep that in mind when you decide to ask questions. With that, I will call on Commissioner Green for resolution eight, or item 8A.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move the adoption of resolution 22 of today's date. The Standing Rules, which comes to us from the Administrator's Office and the Standing Rules Subcommittee.
Move by-
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Green, support by Commissioner Stack. Questions or comments on this resolution? Any hands? Commissioner Breavy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I had the opportunity to serve on this committee for the last couple of terms. And I definitely think we went through a lot of the rules very thoroughly. And it was a great process, lots of discussions. So we put forward a, a firm set of rules here. And I'm looking forward to having support from my colleagues.
Great. Commissioner Stack.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bolter. Just quickly thanking Commissioners Breavy, Green, and Wooden for their participation on that committee. As Commissioner Breavy indicated, we did have some great discussions and deliberations over some tough issues. And I think reached a, a common respectable consensus. So thank you to them.
Great. Commissioner Wooden.
Not to extend our already long agenda, but I do want to echo those comments and thank my colleagues and especially Chair Stack, Commissioners Breavy and Green for their time over the last six weeks to get this done. And very much will look forward to voting for this resolution.
Great. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I was able to attend some of the Standing Rule Committee meetings. And I just want to thank our staff for doing such a great job, our legal staff, as well as the commissioners that volunteered on that or were appointed to the Standing Rules Committee. Did a great job, made sure our standing rules also abide by law and state law. I had a question about 310C. 310C speaks about resolutions. And, and it seems to define what resolutions will be passed. But at the same time, with the talk surrounding the fact that we just basically don't do resolutions, I'm trying to find out why it was redefined. If we're not doing resolutions, why was 310C redefined in the new Standing Rules? There, there are amendments to the resolution. And I need those explained and to understand the reasoning behind that. If anyone could answer those questions.
Commissioner Stack, do you want to tackle that?
Yeah, I will attempt to do that. And then if Linda's on the line, let her comment as well. So clearly, we do do resolutions, obviously, we've got a lot of them today. The, the purpose of the clarification was essentially to provide that the, the longstanding practice of this commission in not taking on near policy, non-binding resolutions is what was addressed there. It does not intend to say that we will not do resolutions. And it is not intended to say that we don't, would not do proclamations. So there's also a component of that in there. So that was merely the clarifications to essentially put into the rules what is our longstanding practice.
Thank, thank you so much for your answer, Stan Stack. And that, great that we are letting people know that the fact that sometime has been mentioned that we do not do resolutions, that there is a distinct difference between certain resolutions that are asked for. And once again, Stan Stack, I just want to thank you for all of your hard work on the committee. Because not only did you do some hard work, you did a lot of research. And you brought some valuable, a valuable voice, as well as Steve Wooden and others that were on the committee. Want to thank everybody that participated in the Standing Rules Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack. And I want to echo those comments. I find that process to be very tedious. And I want the public to know that the four individuals that served on this Subcommittee were truly doing a service to our board. So thank you for that. And with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 22, missionaries, SCAGs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 18 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes, resolution 22 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 8B, and I will call on Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move resolution 23 as of today's date. It establishes a chief inclusion officer and comes to us from the Administrator's Office.
Support by Sparks.
Moved by Commissioner McLeod, support by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments on this resolution? Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Two questions and, and one sort of comments, if you'll permit me. My first question is just a clarification. Is my understanding that the, to former Commissioner Mayhew's public comment was that there, he thought there was already an inclusion officer. If I recall correctly, that is an HR role that is more internally focused on hiring practices and staff culture, where the, this chief inclusion officer will be more focused on policies and external factors and how Kent County works to tackle systemic racism beyond our, how we impact, how we work within our county staff. Is that correct?
Wayman.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, would you like to take the opportunity to further and, and explain this role?
Sure. This, this position that Commissioner, former Commissioner Mayhew mentioned, he's, he's talking about the role that is in HR today. That role used to be occupied by Tom Carnegie. He was probably remembering when that position was established. And it is, in fact, what you just shared, Commissioner Wooden. That role has been more of an internal role, handling EEOC, labor relations. But they've also worked at times in the area of diversity, inclusion, beyond that role, more so than what Tom did. And that role currently today will continue. They will work in concert with the person that will be placing in the chief inclusion officer role.
Thank you. And just as a follow-up question, as it will be the CIO's office role to assess how our policies and practices are impacting racism and systemic racism, while policies themselves and decisions are still vested in this board and in the administrator, will the CIO be given latitude in assessing and determining and sharing their findings on policies and practices? And be given that degree of independence and latitude to, to assess and determine? So that the commission has a, an honest understanding of, of what things may need to be changed in the future?
Absolutely. That's, that's the key, one of the key aspects of this role. They will be responsible for identifying opportunities for recommending things to the Board of Commissioners in relation to any of the items that you've shared, as well as the issues that were raised during public comment.
And just as a follow-up then, because this position would be in the Administrator's Office, I believe they are an at-will employee. Will there, are there, will there be certain employment protections in their hiring to ensure that they're granted a little bit of, or not a little bit, but that, that necessary latitude without discipline? At least in assessing issues, knowing that full policy changes still have to come back to the board? Or are there protections like that already in place?
Well, we have a, we have a very robust policy manual that deals with any kind of infractions towards any employee. In addition to that, of course, this employee, and any employee in the county has an obligation if they're feeling that they're being intimidated or harassed or undermined in their role. They have access to, to you as well as an attorney if there are issues related to that relationship with me or this office. But all employees under the MPP program are under the at-will category. And that includes my, myself, through you, as well as through any, any department that is an MPP-related group.
Great, thank you. And, and as a final comment, in light of my colleagues' sentiments during public comments, assessing he could not see any evidence of systemic racism in, in our community, I, I merely thought it might be a valuable point of education if I found a few facts for him and others in this discussion. I was fortunate to take a few moments and pull from our 2020 Community Health Needs Assessment, certain racialized outcomes when it comes to health and, and social determinants of health, like financial security. Black unemployment in 2019 was three times that of white unemployment. Hispanic unemployment was almost double that of white unemployment. Over half of black families are experiencing some form of financial debt because of lower incomes, lower wealth disparities.
Commissioner, do, do you want to save some of that for miscellaneous? Or is there further questions in there?
Well, I can save it for miscellaneous. I merely put it in this moment because it is pertaining to the chief inclusion officer. If, if it would be appropriate to move it to miscellaneous, I certainly can, can wait until then. But I guess I'll-
Trying to get our questions answered right now for, to vote.
I will, I will yield back the floor and, and share my comments for-
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry about that momentary pause. I had to tell my four-year-old to quiet down here for a minute. So first, I, I would like to say to the, the members that, of the public that spoke up in public comment with some concern that this position is nearly-
Commissioner Coleman, I want to be sure we're getting questions asked to, at this point. And then we'll, we will address comments in miscellaneous or public comments. So are we getting, do we have questions for this?
I don't, I don't have, I don't have a question. I would, if it's okay, Chair, to, then I'll save that comment for miscellaneous. But repeat, repeat my comment that I made at the Legislative and Human Resources regarding my opinion on this resolution.
For your vote, your vote, okay. Your vote explanation, yep, sure.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So my LHR colleagues, I apologize for repetition from Tuesday, but just so that the, the other members of the commission and the public can hear my perspective on this. I, I do think that clearly, you know, Commissioner McLeod, Chair Bolter, Administrator Brett, you know, all who are, you know, supporting this, see it as something that moves forward inclusion. I really, you know, genuinely believe that. And my concern is that this position would cause actual degradation over time in terms of true perspective on inclusion. Because to really, truly achieve good broad inclusion over time, it's really all of our jobs to continue to consider that. The example I, I raised on Tuesday was, I was recently in a technology conference. The presenter was talking about, you know, neurodiversity in the workplace and supporting people that have neurodiverse backgrounds, whether it's focused on the autism spectrum or, or other neurodiversity. And it was kind of an eye-opener to me in that, you know, I have worked, you know, in a church setting with a number of kids, you know, on the autism spectrum. And I have a son myself, you know, on the autism spectrum. And yet, that type of inclusion in the workplace had never crossed my mind. And I think it's important that we're all engaged in this conversation of what true inclusion looks like, you know, over time, and that it becomes all of our responsibility. And my concern with this making it a specific and permanent role is just that that would, over time, actually be an adverse outcome to that goal that suddenly, you know, a few years from now, people will silently say to themselves, oh, well, that's so-and-so's job. It's not my job anymore to, you know, think about that. And so for that, for that reason, I'm not supportive of, of this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners want to give their vote explanation? That's fine, or ask questions. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I first want to thank all the people in public comment today that took time to speak on this resolution. My question is more towards Wayman. You know, when I hear the words inclusion, equity, and diversity as the role of this position, yes, racism does fit into that. And yes, I know racism exists. I see it. I see it in the workplace, I see it in public. But what, what bothers me is that the vast majority of the comments today were directed at this position would be dealing with racism and the black and Latinx. And I just kind of want, you know, remind people that, you know, inclusion, equity, and diversity, that's just plain discrimination. And it's hatred. And, you know, I want to say, Robert F. Kennedy probably said it best when he was talking shortly after the death of Martin Luther King. You know, in this county, this country, a vast majority of white people, black people, Asian people, Native Americans, we all want to get along. We want to make our communities better, and we want to do things working together. But the paintbrush is there to kind of divide us. So, so Wayman, my question to you is, I mean, yes, racism would be addressed by this person, but what about discrimination on religious beliefs? Whether you're of the Jewish faith, the Catholic faith, Hindu? What about because of your age? You know, I heard Commissioner Coleman speak about disabilities. You know, what about physical and mental disabilities? Do we provide equity and diversity and, and inclusion for them? Your, your gender, your gender orientation, your cultural beliefs? I mean, there's a whole spectrum of things that I would hope would be covered by this officer. But it seems like the dialogue is given- but it seems like the dialogue is giving it more laser-focused on one specific issue. And I'm not downplaying that. It's an important issue. But if we're going to deal with inclusion, equity, and diversity, it has to do more than just race.
It's my understanding that's why we are calling it the Inclusion Officer. But Wayman, do you want to kind of give us some more information?
Yes, we held a conference with all of the employees that were interested over at the Chamber a couple of years ago, related to the very thing that Commissioner Ponstein brought up. Madam Chair, yes, that is exactly what we're talking about. It's broader than race. It is related to disparities in disabilities, gender, religion, as you spoke about. It's a broader responsibility that we're talking about. Because oftentimes, we forget that some members of the community, whether they're black, white, gay, lesbian, a religious background, whether Muslim, Jewish, Baptist, all short. With hair or without hair, my hair. I don't have any. Yeah, it's all of that and more. And so this is the sophisticated nature of this role. And, you know, I really appreciate that question, Commissioner Ponstein, because it's exactly that. It's going to deal with all of the infractions, all of the disparities, all of the injustices and equities that we constantly are dealing with, all of us, each day.
Commissioner Ponstein, any, you're good?
No, thank you for that clarification. It's just something that was left out, and I know you gave me a little leeway without a direct question, but thank you, Wayman, for that response.
Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Kind of following up on something that Commissioner Coleman said. Whatever it's worth, I have a post-it note on my computer screen here, or I should say on the edge of my screen, that simply says, "Nothing gets done unless somebody does it." And inclusion really needs to be, yes, it has to be everyone's job. However, I totally support this Inclusion Officer. We need somebody at the point that this is their focus. They can elevate what we do, can point out what we could do more throughout our departments, throughout the various communities and what have you, within our wider community. You know, at the end of our statement on racism that was issued at the beginning of the month, it talked about what we do, you know? It's, I mean, that was a pretty general, broad comment. I definitely see this person focusing on what we do and making sure what we do is something. So I look forward to things getting done, because somebody will be doing it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolkowski. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Volter. Can we take just a minute and walk through the hiring of this position and the process for that?
Sure, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
So today's decision will give me the latitude and support to move ahead with the posting of the position. A position, posting is already prepared. There's a couple of tweaks that I'm going to make today, but that will be posted. And it will be an internal posting that hopefully we will identify an individual within the organization. Once we have that person identified, of course, we've got to give notice to, if in fact that person's within the organization. And I suspect that a notice of acceptance would mean that that person would start here in the role within the next month.
Any follow-up, Commissioner Jones, are you good?
Just to clarify, so this isn't going to be looking outside the organization? We're going to be hiring from within, Wayman?
Initially, we are going to take this inside. You might be aware that there are individuals within the organization that do some of this work already. And we want to make sure that we give the opportunity for those who are interested in doing this work. And I believe we do have some really fine candidates within the organization. We're going to give that opportunity to folks inside.
All right, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Womack, I've seen your hand up and down, and now up again.
Oh, yeah, I see that Tom Antor at the back raised his hand. I thought he was leaving. So I didn't know if that hand was still up.
You have a question related to-
Yes, I have a question. Is this a part-time job or a full-time job for the Chief Inclusion Officer? I have a few questions.
Yes, it's full-time.
This is full-time. And when I looked at the Resolution 48B, it did not mention what the salary would be for the Chief Inclusion Officer that we're voting upon today.
It'll be like 385, and that range is between 100 to, I believe it's 120, 25. It's a very high-level position within the organization. It'll be an executive-level position for the county.
Well, that's good. And I definitely want to thank Wayman Britt for his work on this that started about a year ago. And foresight to understand that we do need an Inclusion Officer, a Chief Inclusion Officer, and I support this 100%. At the same time, listening to public comment and understanding that the populace has asked that this person not be muzzled, that this person not be fired, discriminated against themselves, even though they hold such a high position. Because discrimination against our highest officials, our highest officials, our highest-paid minorities in West Michigan, they have also faced discrimination. So when I listen to some of the comments today from our Commissioners that have come out publicly, that is what happens in the back rooms and behind the scenes. People get a job, but for them to be effective in their job, the staff is often ridiculed, people micromanage them. This position hasn't even started. And even though it was worked on a year ago, it was made sure today that a minority were presented. It was handpicked which minority would present it for various reasons. It was picked who would not participate in it for various reasons. So when you look at, when you look at it, and we have minorities' names surrounding by it, it gives the public the ideal that the inclusion that people of color have been looking for, that this is part of the answer. I believe it is part of the answer, but I do believe if there's outside interference that continues to say, "This is not about race. This is about everybody." Yes, it is about everybody. But why, when it's spoken about, do we bring up African-Americans? We make sure African-Americans are supporting it to try to put water on a fire that's been burning for over 400 years? I'm going to wrap this up and just say I support it. I believe the public is right, that we have to make sure this person is a person that has the right to do their job. I think Governor Whitmer's Executive Order 2029, declaring racism a public health crisis, that is very important, that we know where this person stands when it comes to statewide and national efforts to fight racism and have more inclusion. Or it would be, as Mahew has said, we have an Inclusion Officer on hiring. We also have an inclusion group that Mahew talked about, that nobody was ever able to answer what outcomes came for it, or if they're still around, and their effectiveness, and why the community doesn't know about it. I'm going to quit now, and in my miscellaneous, I will be bringing up some of the great things I have seen Kent County do in equity. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you. And I am pulling into my doctor's office right now. I kept the phone on, so I just want to say two things. One, I don't think we should be citing Governor Granholm for anything because of what she's done to the elderly nursing home patients. And that's going to come back to show what her competence level really was. But the most important thing I want to say is, I want you to hear this very clearly. The current Vice President of the United States has famously said, "Within the year, she does not believe in equal opportunity." Okay, let me repeat that. She does not believe in equal opportunity. What she does believe in is equal outcomes. Now, if you want to debate that statement, and let's take that to the next level. Is that really where we're at in this country? That's what we need to be talking about. This is the Vice President. You could say she's the President of the United States at this point. She doesn't believe in equal opportunity. She believes in equal outcomes, and she said that on national TV. That's my last, I got to go to my doctor, and you can maybe talk about it miscellaneous. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions about the resolution before we vote today? Seeing no hands, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 23, Commissioners Skaggs-
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy. Commissioner Hennessy. Commissioners McLeod.
I say yes. I have a problem. I've been hacked during the course of this meeting, and I need help.
Okay, I've got your yes vote recorded, Commissioner. Commissioners McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Absolutely, yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Coleman.
No.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan. Morgan. Commissioners Antor. Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Chair Volter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 16 yeas, one nay. The motion passes. Resolution 23 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would like to remind all of my board members, fellow colleagues, that if we could please keep our comments on these resolutions to your vote explanation or questions regarding your vote, to inform you of your vote, and we do have miscellaneous. So with that, we are on to 8C, and I will call on Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Volter. I move Resolution 24 of today's date, the approval of the 2021 federal and state legislative priorities.
Moved by Commissioner Ponstein, support by Commissioner-
Support by Teal.
Teal, questions or comments on Resolution 24? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Volter, again. So I just wanted to thank Phil Skaggs and Stan Stuck for doing a lot of the heavy work of putting this together. I just want, for the people that are listening, these are just current priorities that we know of. We're constantly lobbying our state, local, and federal agencies and representatives on numerous types of things that occur through the year. So it's just a guideline, and I'm sure the list will get longer as the year progresses.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein. Any other questions or comments on this Resolution 24? Seeing no hands, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 24, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Chair Volter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 24 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 8D of our agenda, and since Commissioner Morgan is not here, I will call on Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Volter. I would like to move Resolution 3252125, additional 911 surcharge appropriation from fiscal services.
Moved by Commissioner Jones, support by Commissioner-
Support by Breavy.
Breavy. Questions or comments on Resolution 25? Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just wondering if we expect this additional dollars we're appropriating here to continue in future years, or is that somewhat of an anomaly for some reason?
I'd say it's an anomaly to the degree that we did not realize that we would be able to capture these dollars from one of the communication companies. And so I think now we have a pattern in play, and we can place this in the budget and actually depend on it.
So the dollars, the increased dollars will be there in future years? We'll just know better in terms of budgeting, but the dollar, the extra dollars will be continuing? Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Stuck.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick follow-up on that. I understand how this additional fund came into the process through negotiations with some carriers. Are there negotiations with other carriers that may see additional funds coming in?
Right now, I don't believe there are any holdovers. I think we're in pretty good stead. We will go back and double-check that before this year's budget. But last year, I think the action that we took to receive those dollars actually improved the electability or the transparency. And I don't think we have anybody out there that's not forking over the dollar.
Great, thank you. Thanks for staff persistence on that.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 25, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Womack. Commissioner Womack.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolkowski? Yep, I got you, Womack. Commissioners Bolkowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Yes.
We've lost, we've lost, Lisa.
Lisa, I can't hear you.
She may need to come back in again.
Is Assistant Clerk on the line? We'll be back in person in April.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we were on McLeod.
Correct.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks.
Yes.
Commissioner Teal.
Yes.
Commissioner Breavy.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Burl.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Chair Volter.
Yes.
And I will do the first ones that we missed, just for the sake of transparency here. Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodin.
Yes.
Got you both. Commissioner Womack.
Yes.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Yes.
Commissioner LeGrand.
Yes.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Yes.
Okay, we have 17 yeas. The motion passes.
Thank you so much. We're on to Item 8E, and I will call on Commissioner Breavy.
Thank you, Chair Volter. I move Resolution 26 of today's date, the request to waive food licensing fees for 2021 from the Health Department.
Support Jones.
Ponstein.
Moved by Commissioner Breavy, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on this issue? Commissioner Ponstein. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So Wayman, just a clarification on this. You know, I appreciate the Finance Committee putting this through. This is one sector of our economy that faces unprecedented challenges. So seeing that we're waiving this fee, and obviously that's gonna affect the Health Department budget, with the Restore America funds that have been distributed, can either that be used to reimburse the County Health Department for our good gesture of waiving these food licensing fees?
Wayman.
Yes, those funds can be utilized for that. The information, the information we have, so yes, we could apply that, that logic for reimbursement.
Thank you.
Commissioner LeGrand.
Hi, I just wonder what, what's the scale that we're, you know, what's the order of magnitude? How much money are we talking about for one year's worth of waiving food licensing fees?
I believe it's a million dollars total to the, to our budget, but Wayman, did you have additional comments?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. It's, I believe it's about 1.2 million. Adam or Gail or Teresa, are you on? Just to confirm that.
I am, Wayman. And, and yes, that's correct. A little over 1 million.
I'm sure that's a little bit of a moving target because restaurants open and then they close. I just thought it'd be good to have that out there. So thanks a lot for that information.
No problem. Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What about the organizations, the restaurants that have already paid? Will they receive a reimbursement, or are they just?
Yeah, Adam, I had these same questions. Adam, can you kind of give us a timeline and how this logistically is going to work? And then also, just so members know, it is our intention to, that, that we will be conveying this from the board through some sort of written correspondence, so that these restaurants understand this, this was coming from the county, as an action taken by the County Board of Commissioners. Adam?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Every year, the licenses that the restaurants have expire at the end of April. And so in late March, we send out applications for license renewal, along with an invoice for how much that license is going to cost for the coming year. So the timing of this is very important, because we need to send those applications out very soon. And so another letter will include an invoice that does not have our Kent County renewal fee, and will explain to them why that is the case, and the action of this board in making that happen for this coming year.
So is that a reimbursement, or?
Yeah, so Commissioner Sparks, to answer your question, to this point, we have received no, no applications, no, no funds from the restaurants yet, because we haven't sent out the applications with, with that invoice yet. So we have no funds to, to reimburse at this time.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I just want to thank everybody that has worked on this agreement. This, this is just great, and just another sign of how the county and the organizations and department heads that we work with work so hard for the people of the county, and this is definitely something, the food licensing waiver is something I will definitely be supporting today.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack. Any other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, I just have a comment that this is a big day for us for various reasons. We're doing a lot of business today, but this was specifically something I had requested back with the middle of the pandemic. We were trying to figure out how we could do it, because we also collect the state fee for the state and remit it to the state. So we had to figure out how we could do that and find the funds to backfill the loss. Really, really appreciative of, of Adam and his team and Wayman and, and his team to, to be able to find a way to do this. It's not, obviously, thousands and thousands of dollars, I don't think, to, to these restaurant owners, but it is a small gesture that we can provide in, in an effort to help them during this time. So with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 26, Commissioners Scaggs.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Commissioners McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have seventeen ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 26 is adopted.
Wonderful, thank you. We are on to eight F of our agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is my pleasure to move the adoption of Resolution 27 of today's date. It is to approve the subaward agreement for COVID emergency rental assistance program, for the COVID emergency rental assistance program. It comes to us from Kent County Community Action.
Moved by Commissioner Woodin, support by Commissioner.
Womack.
Womack. Questions or comments on Resolution 27 today? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. I see you're back.
There is a comment.
Commissioner LeGrand has a question.
And I, I'm, I'm not trying to get too far into weeds here, but I mean, I'm, I'm really happy to see this moving forward. My question is just, if anyone can quickly explain how this interacts with eviction prevention, just technically how that unrolls. I know that's gonna be a big concern going forward.
Wayman.
Let's have Jenny, she's the point on this, Jenny James from our office.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I would, I would respond to that, that this is one component of our, of eviction prevention here in the county. The goal is to keep people in their homes using the, this is rental families, households. Keep them in their homes using these state funds through MISTHA. And as you know, we also have other ongoing programs to support families who are at risk of losing their housing without the factor of COVID, so this is just adding on. And folks who are eligible households that are eligible need to indicate how they have been impacted by COVID specifically. So it's, it's eviction prevention specifically related to COVID.
Thank you. Commissioner LeGrand, you good? All right, Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I am on the Kent County Community Action Committee, and Jenny is correct when she says there is a provision in there for those who are at risk within the next year of eviction notice, having some financial help on their rent, and I just thought that was just so, such a great thing to be added, just a foresight to help on all levels when it comes during the pandemic and the situation that citizens are going through. So definitely something I will be supporting today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack. Seeing no other hands, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 27, Commissioners Scaggs.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
One second.
Hennessy. Commissioner Hennessy.
Yes.
Commissioners McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein. Commissioner Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam, Madam Chair, you have seventeen ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 27 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to Resolution 8G, and I will call on Commissioner Scaggs.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 28 of today's date. It provides for funding and hiring of temporary personnel to implement the COVID emergency rental assistance program. That's over 38 million to help those in need who've been impacted by the pandemic, to keep them in their homes and keep landlords able to pay their property taxes, so.
Moved by Commissioner Scaggs, support by Commissioner Ponstein. Questions or comments on Resolution 28? Seeing no, no hands, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 28, Commissioners Scaggs.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Antor. Commissioners Green.
Yes.
And Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have seventeen ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 28 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to eight H of our agenda, and I'll call on Commissioner Breavy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution 29 of today's date, land and water conservation fund grant for Walfield Park Development from the Parks Department.
Moved by Commissioner Breavy, support by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments on this resolution? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So Wayman, maybe for you or for staff, and if you don't have the answer, you can just maybe pass it on to me. So, so my question's got to do with the next three resolutions. There's always been a lot of talk about the Nat- Natural Resource Trust Fund. Is the vast majority of that funding coming out of that trust fund? Is it for accus- acquisitions? Or are we starting to see more of, you know, we acquire all this space for parks, but there's never money to improve and enhance those parks?
I would say yes, that's, that is the answer I would give you, but Hannah, are you out there with the dandelion parks? Do you answer, please?
Yes, I am. Good morning, Commissioner. So as you know, there was a vote to modify how that system works. There hasn't been changes yet, but there will be, we assume there will be changes coming, which allows them to spend more on development dollars moving forward.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Ponstein?
Nope, that's, that's the, what I wanted to hear. So thanks. Keep us updated, because this is an opportunity for counties to lobby our state officials to make that change, because maintenance is the big cost for us that's ongoing. Acquisition's just a one, one-time expense.
Right. All right, seeing no other hands, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 29, Commissioners Scaggs.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have seventeen ayes and zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 29er is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to eight I of our agenda, and I, since Commissioner Morgan is not here, I'll call on Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution 3252130, Michigan National Resources Trust Fund grant submission for Townsend Park land acquisition from the Parks Department.
Second, Skaggs.
Moved by Commissioner Jones, support by Commissioner Skaggs. Questions or comments on Resolution 30? I do not see any hands raised. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 30, Commissioners Scaggs.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have seventeen ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 30 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to eight J, and I will call on Commissioner Breavy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution 31 of today's date, Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant submission for Two Rivers Parkland acquisition from the Parks Department.
Moved by Commissioner Breavy, support by Commissioner.
Bukowski.
Bukowski. Questions or comments on Resolution 31? Seeing no hands, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 31, Commissioners Scaggs.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have seventeen ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 31 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to our last resolution of the day, eight K of our agenda, and I will call Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. It's always nice to be last. So I move for approval of Resolution 32 of today's date, declares a local state of emergency pursuant to the Emergency Management Act and the Open Meetings Act, the purpose of enabling our local bodies to continue to meet virtually if they determine it is appropriate to do so. This would extend to June 30, unless it is extended or shortened by this body.
Moved by Commissioner Stack, support by Commissioner.
Support by. Second by Skaggs.
Breavy. Questions or comments on this resolution? I see Commissioner Ponstein's hand.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Sorry for dominating all the questions. So in, in short, Wayman, by passing this, what does this do with our, i- is it to allow us to still do virtual? Are we still planning to just go virtual, or are we gonna try to transition into live public meetings?
This gives us the ability to move to in-person meetings starting in April, but this will, this does give various locations within the county, they can continue to meet remote, remotely if they would desire. So it does give that. Linda, you wanna expand on that, please?
Sure. This is just, it, it's required under the current Open Meetings Act. If smaller local jurisdictions, the townships, the smaller cities that do not have emergency managers, this gives them the discretion to decide if they wanna have remote meetings or they wanna have meetings in person. It does not compel any of us, the county or our other jurisdictions, to meet in person or to meet remotely. It just allows for that discretion under the current Open Meetings Act language.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Linda.
Commissioner Breavy.
Thanks, Chair Bolter. I just wanted to say that I support this. You know, I support. Thanks, Chair Bolter. I just wanted to say that I support this. You know, I support our board moving into in-person meetings, and I'm really looking forward to that. This does, though, give the opportunity for smaller boards that may not have the space requirements to meet, or, you know, the cost of, the money available to spend on that. So, I think this is good moving forward, and if those boards do choose to meet in person, they also have that option as well. So, I like the flexibility that this provides.
Thank you, Commissioner Breeby. Commissioner Wooden.
I actually lowered my hands, because everything I wanted to say has been said, and I'll just echo those comments, and I'll be voting for this.
That might be a first, Commissioner Wooden. Commissioner Stack.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Bolter. I, just to underscore that this is certainly not a mandate to any of the public entities that they are to meet virtually. We would hope that as we get through this process, they will find the flexibility and the alternatives to get into an in-person meeting as promptly as possible. And certainly, I'm glad to hear the chair indicate that we will be moving to in-person meetings, starting with our next meeting in April. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on Resolution thirty-two? Seeing none, I also just want to echo that there was additional concerns from our Health Department Director Adam London, because we continue to struggle with getting adequate supply of vaccine. It is improving, and things are getting better. But we still are not hitting a safe level for that as well. So, we just wanted to provide flexibility and local control, and this resolution allows for that. So, with those comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution thirty-two, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Commissioner Sparks.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Breeby.
Yes.
Coleman.
No.
Burl.
Yes.
Han Stein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have sixteen yes, one nay. The motion passes. Resolution thirty-two is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Hallelujah, we got through the resolutions. We are on to number nine of our agenda. Public comment related to general county matters. Again, county matters. We will check the email inbox, and we will also look for public comment today. Looks like Lionel Legrone. Welcome again. You have three minutes.
Hey, there. So, I'd like to assume good intent here and not label people based on their comments. So, I'm trying to figure out why Commissioner Antor, as a non-racist person that actually cares about people, would make some of his comments, said, I am thinking he is not reading the documents that are coming out of Kent County, or he's misinformed. The Vice President, Madam Vice President's comments were in the context of equal outcomes should be the goal of public policy, not simply equality, meaning that there's a distinction between equality and equity. Equality has given everybody the same thing. Equity is looking at life circumstances and considering where a person came from, and making sure that they are provided an opportunity to actually begin on equal footing with someone who has had an historical advantage, like a four-hundred-year advantage, because their ancestors enslaved a group of people and got enriched off of them. So, it's important that we understand if we're going to throw these comments out, that we, e- like I say, I don't want to accuse him of manipulating the data or the words, so I'm just going to say that he misinterpreted what he read and should read a little more and understand that Madam Vice President was saying that equal outcomes are the goal of public policy. So, that, that's number one. And number two, I just want to ask, how long do we want to play this game, right? Let's not kid ourselves. Racism exists. We need to do something about it. I, I commend you all for passing the resolution to hire the Chief Diversity Officer. Now, it's time to get that person in place and really get to work. I appreciate it, Commissioner Wooden's questions about the position. I think those are very relevant questions that need to be addressed, because there should be some protection around a person who will work with such divisive issues. And just to clear up one more thing, when we talk about inclusion, we're talking about all marginalized populations, not just race, national origin, disability, et cetera. To the other Commissioner's point, is just right now, race is at the forefront, and we cannot hide from it or run from it. We need to deal with the situation at hand properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Legrone. Dee Jones, are you there? Dee, please state your name and address, and welcome to the Kent County Commission. You have three minutes.
How you doing? My name is Deandre Jones. I stay at nine-six-seven Temerick on the west side of Grand Rapids. I'm calling in for full support of when the resolution for declaring systematic racism as a public health crisis, I'm calling in full support of that when that does come forth to the Kent County Commission, looking at statistic data, even though majority of, there's a small population of African-Americans in Kent County, they make up majority of the population in the Kent County jail. I'd also like to talk about the housing and jobs. I believe when it comes down to it, it all comes down to economics. Economically, the county of Kent has not been very kind to minorities and marginalized communities. And so, I'm just calling in in full support when the resolution comes forth to declare systematic racism as a public health crisis, that Commissioners on the Republican side, Commissioners on the Democratic side, come together and find it within themselves to address this problem that we have here in the county. I believe that we can find, with proper community engagement and organizations working together, with the county and the city working together, I believe that we can find equitable outcomes to make the system a little bit more racist than it is, and that'd be my comment. I appreciate it.
Thank you for joining us today. Raven Odom, please give us your name, address, and your three-minute comment, or less.
Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Raven Odom, and I reside in the first ward here in Grand Rapids, Michigan, so also a Kent County resident. I'm just here to echo the sentiments that a lot of my fellow community members have already reiterated. In the county's mission, you talk about promoting or ensuring a high quality of life for all residents, and we know clearly that racism impedes that for a lot of residents here in Kent County. I think, again, to echo my fellow community members, there was display here during this meeting, an earlier public comment from a commissioner that displays the urgency and the reason why we need to push for solid policy change to adjust racism, and to ensure that there's a financial backing in the budget to ensure that we can enact and implement these changes. So, I'm calling for the commission to, you know, live out its values, live out the things that you state in your mission, and to really ensure that the county, that people are able to thrive in the county and live a full and high, high-quality life. So, when the community comes forward with the resolution to declare public health as a, I'm sorry, racism as a public health crisis, and they have those policy asks and financial asks, that the commissioners will stand firm and stand with the community to ensure that those things are implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Raven. Any other public comment today? Looks like Lily Shulting. Lily, welcome. Give us your name and address, please. You have three minutes.
Hello, I am Lily Chang Shulting, and thank you, Chair Bolter. I live at three-seven-zero-three Burton Street Southeast in Grand Rapids, which is Cleveland. Yes, so, I would like to ask that the commission take on, introduce into the agenda a resolution to declare racism as a public health crisis, and that it include actionable items. We have, we are still in the process of ensuring the actionable items, and we welcome you, and any of you, and many of you, to join us in ensuring those actual items and joining us in the conversation with community engagement. And we just believe that, again, this is going to be nonpartisan. It should be supported by, I'd say, almost all of you, hopefully all of you, but at least all of you, whether, because it is following the statewide directive, so that shouldn't be an issue. And it is for the equity and equality of everyone. And I mentioned this as the importance of race and the impact of race as a public health crisis. And we're not just, we're not saying that other issues aren't important. I am, after all, a disability advocate and the founder of Disability A-Team of West Michigan. But that's, in addition to that, and at the moment, race is also an issue, and, and just the impact of race and all the complexities of race, the myriad problems relating to race and how it affects the equity and, and the health of everyone, physical and mental. So, this is a very serious discussion about the many impacts. It's not what, it's not what we just think it is. It's very deep, and it's very complex. And that is why we need to engage in a very serious discussion and ensure that the resolution is on the agenda, a resolution with actual items. And again, we invite you into a serious discussion with us on that matter. And I would also like to thank Commissioner Robert Womack for his support of this resolution as well as others. Thank you.
Thank you, Lily. Next up, Wesley Watson. Please give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Wesley Watson. Address is ten-thirty Ada Place Drive. Reside in Kent County, Michigan. I just want to echo the sentiments of everybody else of on making racism a public health issue. This is something that we all have to take on, not just at the county level, not just hiring an individual to, to be the, to facilitate over equity and inclusion. But this is some, a personal initiative that we all have to take place within our everyday life, day-to-day lives. And, and I think that the first step is just acknowledging that we do have a problem. We have to open our eyes and create a welcoming environment and creating a safe space where people can express their disparities of what's going on in their lives. You know, racism is real, and throughout this pandemic, we have seen how healthcare can play a big role, how racism will play a big role in healthcare. Just having access to the necessary resources or tools to even schedule a vaccine appointment, even having access when it comes to education, when it comes to having access to broadband internet, to, to even have internet to hope to even have classes for children. Understanding that we have to look at the social determinants of health when we want to solve and deal with issues. When we solve and deal with racism, we will, we will heal our community. We will improve our, our economic stakeholders for every environment, for every individual. And also, when we look at the social determinants of health, we can also improve on environmental racism as well. Environmental racism is something that is life, alive and kicking. When we look at throughout the state, when we look at the high rates of asthma, the high rates of respiratory infections in our, in our children, a lot of it comes from the black and brown community because of years of environmental racism and years of environmental disparities being put into our community. So, racism is alive at every single level, but we have to open our, open our eyes and create an environment, a safe environment, where we can meet people where they're at. And we also have to understand that we might have different opinions, but we have to respect everybody's opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Any other public comment today?
Don't see any hands raised, and there's no messages in the inbox.
Thank you. We are on to official Commissioner Reports, item ten of our agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I would like to share that Experience Grand Rapids had their annual meeting yesterday, and just a moment of highlights, of course, we are still struggling with the pandemic when it comes to our tourism. I would like to note that one of the big pieces is they are targeting twenty-twenty-three for the recovery. The general numbers are twenty-twenty-four, but our head of Experience Grand Rapids, Doug Small, is optimistic Grand Rapids can be sooner. They are focusing on motor coach friendly and said that sporting events will be the first to return to help some of our recovery. So, I just wanted to make a note of those highlights from the Experience Grand Rapids Board yesterday.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Breeby.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I have a brief update from the airport. Many of you received this email earlier in the week from our CEO, Tori Richardson. And I just wanted to highlight that the airport is recovering and is beating the national average, the national numbers by about ten percent. And, but we're only seeing about forty-five percent of daily passenger traffic, around forty-five percent, and that was based on two thousand nineteen numbers. So, we're still quite a ways to go, but keep in mind that April twenty-twenty was just four percent of April two thousand nineteen numbers. So, we're really hoping spring break, it's looking great. We're going to be getting a lot of traffic through the airport, a lot of travelers. And so, that's a good thing. I think along with Commissioner Jones' report with Experience Grand Rapids, we are going to be seeing an increase in numbers and increase in visitors. One thing to note, too, is the airport's in close contact with the airline partners on their schedules and the enhanced safety and sanitation protocols they're doing. So, if you're ever interested in learning more about how the airport is being cleaned, feel free to give me a holler and let me know. I'd be happy to connect you with the tour of the airport, and you can see some of the equipment they use. And finally, the overall financial position is stable. The revenues are outcasing expenses, and the airport can meet all the debt obligations. So, things are looking up, and a positive note, like the airport usually does, airport traffic is continuing to grow. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Breeby. So glad you're on that board. Any other Commissioner report today? I don't see any. I just have one official report regarding the Administrative Search Committee. We are progressing. We will be canceling the twenty-ninth meeting, and we had held April thirteenth. I really encourage board members to participate. Those are open meetings. You're more than welcome to listen in. But things are progressing. We are on pace, and so, just wanted to, I do get a lot of questions about that, so I just wanted to share that with, with you. We are on to item eleven of our miscellaneous, and I will call on Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just wanted to circle back on the parks items that were passed today and to thank the fellow commissioners for their support. The big highlight that I wanted to share is we had two large commitments from our local communities to do this. Cannon Township for Townsend Park committed three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Caledonia Township for the Two Rivers committed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is significant in our partnership with them. They don't have to commit to this. They don't have to commit to this. They have, kudos to Dan DeLupe for his work because that is, is a lot of effort. It's board decisions, it is meetings, it is committee meetings. And we are really, really fortunate to live in a community where our local support does also touch our parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Breeby.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I wanted to mention someone many of you are familiar with. Many of you may have already heard the news regarding the passing of Mark Jansen. Mark was a longtime Gaines Township resident and he had been battling a brain tumor since last fall. And he passed away earlier this week. Mark leaves behind a great legacy of public service. He served our community as the Gaines Township Clerk. He was a Kent County Road Commissioner. He was a state representative and senator, and he also led Habitat for Humanity. He was involved in many things and he was a strong leader. I admire Mark most for his strong faith and the way he led with grace and dignity. Even in his last days, after reading through his care pages account, he definitely let his faith shine. And, you know, he just impacted the community in so many ways that we can see. And he was involved with many of us throughout the years. And it's an honor to know him and to know many of his family members in our community. And I just appreciate his service and the life that he led.
Thank you, Commissioner Breeby. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I wanted once again to thank all the people that took time out of their day to speak in public comment. Yes, racism, racism is an important issue and it's at our forefront. But I think the one thing that we can't forget is that it all begins, if we're going to solve this, with people learning to talk with each other again. I think the art of meaningful conversation is nonexistent in Washington and a lot of the halls of our state legislators. But, but it's something that we definitely need to work at. So I've got just two things quick. I know last year you heard a lot from me about the four-year terms for county commissioner. The Michigan Association of Counties has kind of rethought the strategy on this. You know, we have 83 counties. County commission races seem to be getting more and more political. There are parts of the state of Michigan that are having trouble, people just running for county commissions. So we've got bills that have been dropped. Happy to say that it's a bipartisan effort. Senator Ed McBroom, Republican from Dickinson County, and Rep. Jeremy Moss, which is a Democrat from Oakland County, have put forward bills that are going to be introduced and hopefully passed. We're trying to stay out of the political fray because as county commissioners, one of the big thing was what year were we going to run on? The presidential or the governor years? And we have settled on 2024. Doesn't matter to county commissioners, we already run on both of those. So I've been asked to try to get a resolution from the county and I, I've tried, I've told people that Kent County really doesn't do those types of things. So if anyone feels a desire to contact their legislators and senators, this is probably the best and maybe the last chance that we've got something like this to be passed. And then lastly, mentioned earlier that Commissioner Carroll Haddasian and I had an opportunity to listen in on the annual meeting of the, of the Conservation District Group. And, you know, there are a lot of things going on and I didn't want to slight anyone that didn't go to that because there's a lot of meetings that some of you are at that, that I'm not at. But the thing I took home and sitting not, you know, during that meeting, but I also, as part of my duties on the MAC Board of Directors is I sit on the Environment Committee and I also sit on the Ag and Tourism Committee. And both of those, we are focusing our efforts back to these conservation districts. It was in 2009 when they lost their funding from the state of Michigan. And the, the reasoning was short of funds, recession, but those funds have never been restored. And we've got 74 conservation districts in the state of Michigan. It benefits the whole state and especially West Michigan. What our conservation districts do with self-funding is just nothing short of remarkable. So not only is MAC going to get strongly and more involved on that issue, but I'm going to be pushing them at both of the committees that I sit on that we restore that state funding. But at the same time, you know, the counties need to step up too. And hopefully in our next budget conservation conversations is that we also put some type of allocation to these folks. I, I don't think it's got to be a large amount, but I'm sure they would love a, a, a large amount. But there is balance, there are costs and there's, there's matching funds that they just are not able to meet that are taking funds away from our county. The work they do affects a lot of different aspects of Kent County and the West Michigan area. So hopefully we can have a meaningful conversation about that. Thank you, Chair Bolter.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Two quick items. First, following up on Commissioner Breeby's comments. I was blessed to have been able to serve with Senator Jansen on a number of boards and initiatives. And he clearly set the standard for what it is to be a public servant and he will be greatly best. And the second thing is just to thank our legal staff at county and the other staff. But we've had so many things percolating through over the course of the last month, so many things coming out of left field. And they have responded and addressed a number of these. So I'm just really grateful for their response.
Sorry, I'm having issues again. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Wanted to take a moment and thank those who came in and gave public comment. And, you know, I, I see the, the resolution we passed today as our next step in taking more affirmative actions in tackling systemic inequities, certainly that based on race and also based on the other walks of life that are often not given the same degree of access, opportunity and realistic expectation of outcome as people like myself. And, you know, I, I am certainly troubled by the comments made by a colleague of mine saying that he could not find a piece of evidence for this. And, you know, I, like I said during the remainder of public comment, I took the liberty of, while listening, to dig up the, the facts that our own community health needs assessment that was just approved last year, highlighting and included. And some of those factors were things like black folk are two times more likely to have diabetes or pre-diabetes. They're 1.7 times more likely to have high blood pressure. They're 1.5 times more likely to die of cardiovascular disease. They're three times more likely to be unemployed. The black residents are 45% less likely to be homeowners when it comes to being uninsured. 19% of black residents are uninsured. Nearly a third of all Hispanic residents in this county are uninsured, where only 7% of whites are uninsured. We cannot deny that the historic harm and inequities caused to communities of color, whether it be employment discrimination, redlining, discrimination amongst government services and our fiscal priorities from every level, not just counties, but cities, township, school districts in our state and federal government. This is, decisions made by people in power before us have caused this problem. And this pandemic only shined a light on how pervasive that is and why I am so glad that this chief inclusion officer is a stepping point in taking more affirmative steps in rectifying that. And so I, I thank my colleagues for voting to adopt the position and thanking our members of the community for showing up and asking us to take affirmative steps on tackling systemic racism. Thank you.
You, Commissioner Wooden. Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I, I want to echo the comments about Mark Jansen and, and his unfortunate and untimely death. It was 10 years ago that he was here at Disability Advocates and we were asking him to endorse the county or the Rapid Millage at that time. And we had other things on the agenda and I, I thought it was going to be a quick yes. And an hour later, after he put us through the paces, yeah, he endorsed that millage. And as we walked out of the office together, he just smiled and said, you knew I was going to say yes. I, I just had to make you work for it. He was just a good man through and through. I, yeah, I'll just leave that there. It was awesome to work with him on many issues. Related to the comments about race in our community, I want to invite people to April 22nd is the Annual Fair Housing Day. Our Fair Housing Center is actually a national model of addressing inequities and racism and ableism and any type of discrimination within the housing arena. Evidence is shown throughout the year, unfortunately, in our county of different treatment based on one of those protected classes. So April 22nd, I know we have a county commission meeting. Then you can zoom in on that meeting once we're done that day. And then definitely I'll send some other things around. The othering and belonging work that's being done by Dr. Powell is just fantastic on this issue because it does weave in a lot of things that Commissioner Ponstein and others have mentioned that, yeah, as a community, we have to do better and how do we push people out in whatever we do? Last but not least, I also invite people to look at our own website, accesskent.com, if you've never been there, within our Health Department. Our Health Department has been doing excellent work on this issue of disparate impact, disparate treatment within our community for quite some time. They have some pretty powerful resources and action steps on their part of our website. So I thank Dr. London and his team for their fantastic work up to now. And again, I hope for it to be elevated with our new inclusion officer and additional things. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolkowski. Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I had to switch to calling in because I'm on my way to the Health Department to get my first vaccination. Thank you, Kent County Health Department. What I really wanted to do was to thank the members of the public who came in to share their perspective, to share their, their commitment and their, you know, determination that we see real change in our community. I, I really do appreciate Commissioner Coleman's comments that we need to be careful that we're not compartmentalizing this role. When we discussed it at the LHR meeting, the perspective that I shared, that my concern was that, you know, this could be seen as the end of our efforts at diversity, equity, inclusion, hiring this job. But what I want to make sure is that this is the beginning and that this person becomes the conscience of the administration of our efforts as a commissioner, as a board of commissioners, and that we have lots of communication. So I just want people to make sure they're still bringing it in the future. This is not a one, you know, meeting type of, of commitment. It's not going to be that from us and I'm, I'm happy to see us moving forward with this. But like I said, we have to be the conscience to make sure that, that this position is really doing what we want it to do and that we're really getting changed. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Legrand. Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I also am en route to the Health Department. And so I just wanted to speak to the resolution that was passed to hire the Diversity and Inclusion Officer as well. We did, as Commissioner Legrand mentioned, we, we, I believe that this position would move forward to the larger board for consideration. And that was mainly because I wanted to make sure that, that we had representation, not just in terms of race, but then all of the other diversity factors that we need to consider at the, at the county level. And so I just want to say that I appreciate all of the comments that the community members came to the meeting and made about this specific position, all of their concerns. They're all, I want to just make sure that they know that they're valid and that we heard them. And that a lot of those questions that were asked during the public comment section were also asked in the Legislative and Human Resources Committee as well by commissioners, wondering, you know, if this is going to be the end of the, the situation like Commissioner Legrand said. But then also some more in-depth questions about why it's only being offered internally first, why it would be a national search to begin with. A lot of the questions about is there going to be a division created that would support the position? And all of the other positions that are currently doing the work assumed under this person's leadership? So there's, there's, we, we have asked a lot of the questions and are moving toward hopefully getting some more understanding of what this person will be responsible for. And I just want to share my, my perspective and just saying that also in terms of the commissioner's comments earlier, that racism is not real. You know, as a mother of four black boys, I'm going to have to disagree with that commissioner because that is a real lived experience for many, many people and especially people of color. And as a commissioner on the board that is a person of color, that is raising people of color, I want to make sure that we don't discount the, the lived experiences of people and the things that people are actually going through. So the, as a county board, we just need to make sure that we are representing the people and that we are taking their comments and their concerns and their, their real issues into account. And I want to make sure that the people on the, you know, from the community that are working on the, you know, racism as a public health emergency statement to, to, to reach out to us so that we can make sure that we are in those conversations. We are all, you know, concerned with these things. And I, and I think that, you know, it's, it's just a matter of that communication happening and us not being siloed and thinking that we can't reach out across borders and across, you know, boundary lines. So that is what I had to say today and thank you, Commissioner Bolter.
Thank you, Commissioner McLeod, for your perspective. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I, I definitely know that everyone that's on the call right now has a genuine desire to see that as the county, there aren't any unjust barriers to employment with the county. And, and as Commissioner Womack, I think so well put it, also that there's no unjust barriers once a person is in a role in the county for them to, to do their job. And, and I think that's important and I appreciate Chair Bolter, Administrator Britt and all the others who, you know, brought this idea forward because it's, it's brought up a very important conversation, one that we don't have often enough. And I hope that this is not the last time that we have conversation on these matters.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. So just a couple of things. I'm excited to hear that Commissioners McLeod and Legrand are on their way to get their vaccine. I was at the Health Department yesterday getting mine. And I'm not sure if Adam is still on the call. I've thanked him privately, but also want to thank him and everyone at the Health Department publicly. We've got a lot of great places where you can go get your vaccine, from down at DeVos Place at the West Michigan Vaccine Center to around the county, including at the Health Department. Down at the Health Department, extremely well-run, extremely helpful people working there, from the volunteers to the nurses, getting checked in and registered. It was efficient. It was clear. It was easy. And I got to tell you, my heart was pumping because I was really excited about what we've been able to accomplish, you know, as, as a country and as a county to get people vaccinated so that we can move past this pandemic. So a huge thank you to, to everyone that's partnered with the Health Department and the Health Department itself. Go get vaccinated. Let's, let's get through this. Second statement I want to make, again, I want to echo everyone who, who thanks people who came in for public comments to discuss this important issue on racism in our community. I want to also take the time to, to thank Administrator Britt and Chair Bolter for the work that they did on the statement on racism that came out on March 9th. I think it's very important that we keep in mind. I think it's very important that we keep in mind that this statement is the first time the county, to my knowledge, has made a public statement about this issue. And I think we should applaud that and, and understand the significance of it. And I think the, the work of Administrator Britt, his staff on this should be praised and recognized and not denigrated. I think the statement makes three extremely important points. One, it makes a clear statement that racism is systemic here in Kent County. It's not something that's in just people's hearts. It's not something that's just in Mississippi. It is something that is systemic here in Kent County. Two, the statement makes a clear point that it has a devastating impact, not just on health, but on health, but also on public safety, on housing, on education, on employment and on the general quality of life. This is a holistic statement about the devastating impact. These are quotes that racism has in our community. And three, the statement makes a clear indication that the county is willing to, and again, these are quotes, working with all commit, is committed to working with all communities to take intentional steps to deal with the disparities caused by systemic racism. And I am excited to hear that the community is working to, some members in the community are working to, to bring their ideas to us. I think we've made an excellent start here today. And again, I want to applaud everyone that's worked with together. It's been a, it's been a bipartisan effort. It's been a staff and elected effort to get this new inclusion officer. I think this is a clear programmatic and funding step that's being taken that, as Commissioner Legrand said and others said, gives us an opportunity. That's what it does. It gives us an opportunity to take advantage of a new employee dedicated to working on, on limiting the impact of systemic racism in our community. And I look forward to working with every commissioner with the administrative staff and, and with the community to find concrete ways that we can make people's lives better here in Kent County. So, that was just my miscellaneous. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for those comments, Commissioners Skaggs. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I would like to also thank Administrator Wayman Britt and Mandy Boulter for their work on the inclusion officer that started a year ago. And I'm glad to see it come to fruition. I, I want to thank Matt Coleman also for using his voice and him being a Republican, me being a Democrat. Things only work when we work together, but his voice of making sure this person does have our support to be able to do their job and understanding sometimes they're gonna tell us what we need to know and not what we want to hear and that they are not punished for that or their job put in jeopardy. Also want to thank Pointstein for his, Commissioner Pointstein for, for his comments of continuing the conversation about racism. As I look at the statement, the community did not take the statement well because they felt they were not included in it. And I, I do agree there are some great things in that statement. But it, it, it needs to continue to grow. I want to thank all the community members that came in to speak today about racism. Racism is more than a word. It is something that has divided this country for hundreds, hundreds of years. And whenever the word racism is, comes up, there's too many people that shun away from the conversation. And if we aren't all at the table, we won't be able to really push the needle during our generation. I'd like to thank, as I talked about bipartisan people working together, I just want to say under the leadership of Wayman Britt and with the work of Democrats and Republicans together, some of the accomplishments that I've seen that fight against systemic racism. When we look at the Population Health Consortium, a network of health systems and community organizations working together to overcome disparities, to improve the health of all residents. When we look at the lead task force team that has come together under the commissioners on this board. We look at the Latino Citizen Police Academy that is working with our Kent County Sheriff's Department to make sure we have more Latino representation there. When we look at the ICE contract that was canceled. Not all of the commissioners agreed with it, but the public was heard. And it was during our time that that situation changed. COVID-19 public health, when we look at $25 million being put into small businesses during the pandemic, but also making sure that minorities' participation was increased to a record number. When we look at the Kent County Health Department and its leadership with the racial, ethnic and inclusion team that met regularly with community groups to represent blacks, Latinx, Native Americans, Asian-American residents, persons with disabilities, refugee population, and urban church task force with pastors so that all the voices of the community could be heard. Black residents with COVID-19, be, with that infection dropped from a higher nearly 20% down to 7.5%. September rates among Hispanic and Latino residents dropped from a 44% to a May 15% in September. So, the economic relief that came from Kent County. There are a lot of things that we are doing that also may have fit a little more in that statement. The inclusive hiring and training practices, a lot of the work that's being done there. It's just so much. I could go on and on, but we are the People of Color Initiative. We were part of the establishment of Strong, the Strong Beginnings Program, establishing the First Steps Early Childhood Program, housing vouchers, as we talked about the rental assistance that was passed today, hiring of the first, of, of, hiring of another black juvenile detention superintendent, hiring of the first black development and housing director, hiring of the first black assistant county administrator. So much that, that has been done that if I continue, we would be here all day. But can we bring all of this equity that we've been doing in a way that the community will understand it? But at the same time, we must understand that as much as we have done as the county, the community still cries out, because when we understand racism as a whole, all that we have done, we still live in a country where we saw George Floyd killed with a foot on his neck. We still live in a country where racism does exist and it's horrific and it has psychological effects, disparities starting in the delivery room. Black women died three times more often while giving birth than white women. Black people are still the first, last hired and the first fired. Black people still make up the most population of the prison system. Black people are still, there are reading disparities between the people of color. So, there are so many on the list that we could go on and on. So, I just want my co-colleagues to understand that it's sad with all that we do do, that we must understand our work will never be complete. We're, we're one county. We can only do so much with racism, but we must continue to do all that we can and never be upset that the community is challenging to do, us to do more. As I come to a close, I would also like to say, Dr. Martin Luther King, he said, "We will not so much remember the words of our enemy, but the silence of our friends." I like to say, not only the silence of our friends, but when it comes to action, to really, when I, when I volunteered to pay for the Spanish translator, that's another thing I will say Kent County has done. Kent County now has translations. But I'm glad I went that extra little mile when it almost fell out the table to say, "What's a unique legal way within policy I can help push and show the importance of that?" That's how committed I am for inclusion. But not giving myself a pat on the back, it still was the commissioners and the staff that say, "You know what? We need to have translation." So, that comes up under Mandy Boulter's leadership, that comes up under Wayman Britt's leadership and, and all the commissioners that are here. I'm closing out by saying that the Crown Act is a, another situation that has come up. And Michigan State Department Resident, Representative from the state, Sarah Anthony Alanson introduced House Bill 4275 in February 2021 to amend Michigan's Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act. And that would include the definition of race as inclusive of traits historically associated with race, including hair textures and protective hairstyles. As African-American women are 80% more likely to have to change their hair just to work in certain industries and fields of work. So, understanding that equal opportunity and equal access to county services of all residents, there is a county that has historically included the Crown Act to protect their employees. That is something that I will be sending out some emails to all the Kent County Commissioners, looking to find out how we can include this in our hiring practices. Once again, I want to thank the community for coming out. And I hope by me telling the community some of the, the great things that Kent County has done, that we can have some civil conversations. And by telling the county commission, just the disparities that truly exist that motivate our great citizens to come to us with these problems, we can have high respect for our citizens and voters who have voted us in here to represent their issues. And with Governor Grant home, her, her health, racism being a public health crisis with the People's Act that is now going to protect voters' rights, that's about to go through on a national level, I think we at the county have to be in step with the communities. Now, only our local community, but communities on the national level that want us to be the provocators of justice, equality and equity. Thank this commission again for all the great things they have done during this pandemic. It's historical. When people look back, even you commissioners do not understand the great things you've done through this pandemic. But you will look back and you will be proud of yourselves. And I'm sure the community will be proud of all the businesses you save, all the jobs you save, the lives we have saved working together. And I am glad that we had public comment together as we welcome on the citizens that spoke together to work with us to continue this great journey. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack. Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'd like to know if we could look at a proclamation supporting Sarah Anthony's Crown Bill Act, the House Bill 4275, and any other Kent County commissioners that want to sign on. I just think that that would be important if we could look at that and work towards some kind of proclamation.
Thank you, Commissioner Sparks.
And I also like to thank everyone for coming today. You, you have been heard. Thank you.
Yes, I have raised my hand.
You, you spoke once already. Just a second. I got another commissioner that would like to speak. Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. And following up with Commissioner Sparks's suggestion about the proclamation, I'd like to suggest also, if we do that, that we work, we'd like to work with Wayman and, and the human resources staff to mirror the Crown Act and make sure that certain hairstyles, you know, we talked about African-Americans are protected under the race category, but then also look at it more broadly in terms of all people that, you know, have a different sort of style and, and, and perspective being represented in anything that we move forward because it's not just about race, it's just about, it's, it's mainly about, I feel, as a, as a black woman who is also a hairstylist who understands, you know, how important Crown and your, your Crown is to who you are, but it doesn't reflect your abilities to be able to perform your job or do the things that you need to do as a citizen. So, I would definitely appreciate the opportunity, Chair Bolter, to be able to work with staff, to be able to figure out a way to create the proclamation that Chair, excuse me, that Commissioner Sparks mentioned just a moment ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McLeod. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I would like to definitely extend to Commissioner Sparks and Commissioner McLeod to work with me as I've already contacted Mandy Boulter yesterday about a proclamation. Something I really didn't want to come out in public until we had a little more discussion and had a chance to talk to other commissioners to tell them why we need their support. But I have talked to her about this proclamation and it seems like it is headed in a positive direction, but really can't say it because if I've only mentioned it to the chair, I do have to still talk to other commissioners to have their support. I would like their support. I don't have to have their support on the proclamation, but it's always good. I've also talked to staff and it's something that I alluded to in, in my miscellaneous, is making sure we have this within our hiring practices. Something I'd also like to talk to the office, the new officer inclusion about. So, I definitely welcome those commissioners along to work with me as well as anybody else on this commission. When it come to the Crown Act, I have covered all bases, but I'm sure there's some blind spots. So, I look forward to meeting with other commissioners as I continue to push the Crown Act. And we can all work together. Thank you.
Any other commissioner miscellaneous before I do some housekeeping and, and, and some commenting? Any other? It's only 11:20. Okay, well, we will address a few things real quick, some housekeeping items and, and some other things today. I do want to echo that anytime members of the public want to come address us, we, we welcome that. We certainly, as a body, an elected body, we should be all very accessible at any time, not just in a board meeting. We want to make sure that things are productive. We want to make sure that we are hearing from members of the community. So, appreciate your attendance today, but also know that there are various routes of communication to always be in front of us. Secondly, you know, when I became chair two years ago and trying to follow tradition, we have a, a great staff and Kent County has always kind of viewed itself a little different from other counties. We have always tried to lead. If we didn't lead in this regard, you know, that, that may be, you know, a point of view. But I also feel that under Wayman Britt's leadership, we, we have led in that we did issue a racism statement. We, we do reflect and, and represent an entire county with townships and agriculture and, and urban areas and, and all kinds of different types of businesses. So, when you do something like that and you're speaking for an entire county, it takes a while to, to gain information from not just one group of, of individuals, but, you know, you're, you're representing a, a countywide elected clerk and a treasurer and a prosecutor and a sheriff and, and all the board members and all the employees that make up our county. And, and to Commissioner Skaggs' point, you know, this, we do feel that this is more than just a health issue. I think health is an issue, of course, because we're in a hundred-year pandemic and we do health, we do address health with a health department, certainly. But, you know, I think the statement really tried to reflect the fact that, that it's not just a health issue. So, that was our, our goal and our intention. And I don't know a lot of other counties that have done it that way. We don't, we do not take up non-binding resolutions in this board so we can look at other avenues and other ways. The racism statement was one. But also to Commissioner Womack's point, when he discussed all the things that have been done, those things need to be, you know, shouted from the rooftops and we also need to hear what else we need to do. So, when we did issue that statement, did issue that statement, and I know we're working on this, I want to make sure that it is clearly displayed on our website, but not just the words of a statement. It's important to follow up with action items, and so, we will be having, you know, some sort of hyperlink so that the public can see all the things that are being done. Sometimes, it's hard to assume positive intent with politicians, and unfortunately, that's the nature of where we're at right now in this country. So, I understand that, I get that, but I do try to assume positive intent with everything, everyone that comes to the board. You're in, all of our intentions are positive, and we want to see positive change. So, with that, I am really proud of the Inclusion Officer action taken today. I am very proud of Wayman Britt for pulling that together, and I really hope that the community now has kind of a face and a liaison to help us capture and hear you. With that, I also want to talk about former Senator Jansen. I worked with Senator Jansen. I ran a campaign against Senator Jansen. He won. But what an amazing individual, true public servant and true servant heart, and his losses is felt, and he did a lot, a lot of good work for our community, and I just want to acknowledge him. I also want to acknowledge Commissioner Steck today. A lot of people don't realize that the Vaccination Clinic over at DeVos Place has had a couple contractual issues, and he has done a lot of work in that regard, and I want to make sure that his work is acknowledged, because I do feel that that building is operating under its highest and best use right now, to get our community vaccinated as quickly as possible and our economy back to normal and our lives back to normal. We will be meeting, as mentioned, in person on the 22nd. We are finalizing where that's going to be and how that's going to look. We will be spacing, we will be using all safety procedures and precautions. However, we will be meeting back in person as a full board on the next meeting, April 22nd. And also wanted to mention, to the point of the DeVos Place, there's been a lot of questions raised about kind of the structure and how all that came about. We will be having two work sessions in April to address at least one, if not to, to address and answer questions. Please direct all those questions to Wayman and Jenny so that we can have those prepared, but want to take kind of a deep dive into all of that, the authority, the structure, the rights of the county and the city, and how that all is put together. So, with that, next week is spring break. I hope you all are able to get out and enjoy some time with your family, and with that, I will ask Commissioner Teal for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you Chair Bolter. I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair, to Thursday, April 22nd, 2021, at 8:30 a.m. for an official meeting.
Moved by Commissioner Teal, supported by?
Womack.
Commissioner Womack. All in favor, say aye. Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you everyone.